Good evening and welcome to the August 26th meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Duer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Littoral.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz, Vice Mayor Bales, Mayor Adams.
Here. Have a motion, please.
May I move to excuse Vice Mayor Bales and Councilwoman Schwartz?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Vice Mayor Bales and Councilwoman Schwartz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And I'll turn it over to Councilmember Kern.
Thank you, Your Honor. The pledge of the flag. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you could just stand a moment, I'd again like to ask for a silent prayer for our first responders. It seems like every week you're reading in the paper or hearing in the television about another officer that's either been wounded or killed in service, or a firefighter that's perhaps had the same kind of problem, and I'd just ask for a moment of silence.
Thank you. We have an agenda before us. Any additions, corrections, or...
We will be approve the agenda, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And we have two sets of minutes. August 12th, regular council meeting. Any additions, corrections, deletions, whatever?
Move to approve August 12th regular meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the August 12th regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I don't think there's any abstentions. Excellent, okay. And then we have the August 19th council work session minutes. Any changes, corrections?
Motion to approve the August 19th council work session minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the August 19th work session meetings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Yes, thank you. Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Ordinance 24-21, the Sur Gas Station, the application was withdrawn by the developer, so we don't need that one.
Ordinance 24-22, an ordinance to declare certain city-owned property interests as surplus and to approve the conveyance of a gas main easement on city-owned property generally known as the Beaver Creek Golf Course.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of city council. As you know, Fisher Holmes is currently constructing a new subdivision just to the east to Canterbury Trail Section 10 and south of New Jeremy Traybine Road. As part of that project, Forest Oaks Drive is going to be extended to the east, and it's eventually going to curve around and come back into New Jeremy Traybine Road. As a part of that project, Center Point Energy wants to service the new neighborhood with a new gas main, where they would tie into an existing gas main along the north side of Forest Oaks Drive and extend that main through the new neighborhood. In doing that, they have to cross the cart path for the golf course, though, so it's necessary for the city to grant an easement for that gas main across the cart path property so they can get access to the new neighborhood to the east there. And the drawing on the screen here, I kind of have highlighted where the location of the proposed easement would be. It's approximately, it's a very small easement, approximately 200 square feet. Initially, this is kind of a picture of the area. You can see there's currently some work going on on the cart path to realign that to better fit within the city property. As a condition of the easement, they agreed to bore the new gas main under the cart path to minimize any disruptions to play. Additionally, we added a clause to the easement document where they have to coordinate any non-emergency work on that gas main with the golf course to minimize disruptions to play as well. So with that, we happen to answer any questions.
Counsel, input?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Permanent easement was a question?
Yes.
Thank you.
And they won't do any work on it during, if there's need later, they wouldn't do it during golfing hours?
That's correct. When they initially install, it'll be bored underneath it, so there'll be equipment on either side of the cart path, so they won't disrupt play when they put it in. The only time they would be digging out there and affecting plays is if there's some kind of emergency with the gas main where they immediately have to get to it and plug a leak or something like that.
Anyone else? This is an ordinance, so there is time now for public input. You would like to come up and speak to this, you have three minutes, state your name and your address, please. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Anything else from counsel? Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I bid to move ordinance 24-22 to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 24-22 to a second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution 24-31.
Resolution 24-31, a resolution directing the Green County Auditor to enter the cost of overgrown grass cutting on the tax duplicate for the, excuse me, properties described in Exhibit A.
Good evening, Mayor, members of counsel. Yes, this is Resolution 24-31. It's, we do this on an annual basis for the noxious weeds and tall grass. Basically, we go through a process of issuing violations and send out invoices to the grass properties that we have to mow, and if those go unpaid, ultimately, they get down to the Green County Auditor's office and get put on the tax rolls. Let me go through a little bit. Our sections in the Coda ordinances in 9710 and 9711 states that grass and weeds, noxious weeds, can't exceed 10 inches in height. So if we get a, either someone calls in for a complaint, or if we're on a proactive sweep and we notice grass that's 10 or more inches, we notify the property owner, we put a sign in the yard, and give them five days to bring the yard into compliance with the 10 inches. Again, compliance is our goal. It's our ultimate goal is, our goal is not to mow lawns, we're not in the lawn mowing business, our goal is to get compliance with our ordinances. So after five days, if the, we go out and re-inspect, if the lawn hasn't been mowed, then we have a contractor that we have on call, and we send, let them know what properties need to be mowed, and then they send, the contractor sends us a bill, and then we send an invoice to the property owner with an administrative fee. If they don't pay that bill within 30 days, we send a second notice out, and then there's an additional $25 administrative fee, and if that second one isn't paid, then that property goes on the list, which you have this evening. Overall, last year, we issued 333 violation notices for grass and tall weeds, and over 85% of the properties corrected within the five or seven days, depending on the weekend. The cost for the contractor to mow is stated at $75 per lawn, that's a one-hour rate, and pretty much with that contractor that we have, they can mow almost every lawn in Beaver Creek within an hour based on their equipment. So what we have this evening is 18 parcels. There's 25 assessments total, some of them have multiple assessments on them that weren't paid. The total assessment is $6,250, and those are going on the 18 different parcels to cover the cost of the contractor and to pay the administrative costs. So the resolution before you this evening, staff is recommending of, and we happen to answer any questions that counsel may have.
Thank you. Any input from counsel?
I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Burkett. That's a really clear and transparent presentation. It really helps the people that are unfamiliar with this system see how it works and exactly how the costs are broken down, so I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Plenty of opportunity for an individual to express this if they want to do it.
Yeah, I mean, we try to send out, I mean, we try to work with people as best we can.
Right, right.
Again, compliance is our goal, not building or not mowing.
I understand that.
Can you go back to the slide with the cost for the contractor? There seemed to be a pretty steep jump from 2021 to 2022. Or do we change contractors, or did they increase their fee?
It was the same contractor, and that was inflation. The cost of fuel doubled and the cost of their...
It's because everything else went up that year.
Yeah, do we have specific requirements of people we have to use for this?
We put it out to open bid. In January, we'll put it out. We usually do a two-year bid, and that was still the lowest. I mean, it's...
And anyone can bid?
Anybody, it's...
I mean, I could, I could, I could bid companies. I'm just saying, any company can come and bid.
Right, yeah, I mean, it's open.
I was gonna say, I know services that are much lower than that, and I just wonder if maybe they're just not hearing and they're not getting the word.
Yeah, I mean, we put it on our website, and anyone can bid.
That's good to know. Okay.
It's a good process. I mean, I've seen the signs in my neighborhood, and, you know, it's usually cause for a bit of joking at the expense of a friend, and then it's usually cleaned up and done, so it's, it gives plenty of time for homeowner to take care of it.
What people are most mad about is the sign. They say, "We just mowed," well, "We just put the sign out yesterday, so we'll come get it if you mowed," but, yeah, they don't like the sign.
Do you find a lot of homeowners who have, you know, an injury or something like that running into issues here, are there just different ways we can help out a little more?
We've heard a wide variety of reasons why, and, you know, we try to take it consideration, but a lot of our, a lot of our complaints are repeat customers, and so those, you know, we try to, you know, get them through the process as fast as possible, but, you know, there are extenuating circumstances where we'll try to work with the property owner as best as possible.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I think you do a good job of working with them, trying to work it out before we get to that point.
Yeah, I mean, the last thing we're not in the mowing business, we're...
Yeah. Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 24-31.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 24-31. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Resolution 24-34.
Resolution 24-34, a resolution by the Beaver Creek City Council imposing a moratorium on issuance or granting of applications or permits for vehicle service stations, vehicle wash facilities, restaurants, grocery stores, self-storage warehouses, carryouts, and convenience stores in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, for a period of 97 days until November 30th, 2024.
Mr. Burkett.
Thank you again. Yes, this resolution, as the clerk just read, was a moratorium for several different types of businesses within the city. We have, we started the process of doing a zoning code update and a land use plan amendment update with our planning commission, which will go to the first Wednesday in September, so I think it's September 4th. And among the changes were some of the places where these, some of the zoning districts where these uses can be permitted in, and some of them were changing them from permitted to, or proposed, it hasn't gone through, but we're proposing to change them from permitted by right to a conditional use so that, you know, we can have a more in-depth look at applications on a case-by-case basis. So with these changes being proposed, we want to make sure that an application doesn't come in with the old, with the existing regulations so that it doesn't disrupt what we're trying to accomplish with these zoning code changes and the land use plan changes. So again, this moratorium would go into effect, should this be approved, go into effect this evening, and then be in effect for, the 97 days is an odd number, but that's to get it through the end of November, just based on the legislative process by which zoning code changes and land use plan changes need to go through.
Burkett, any input?
I think in general, economic development has been very strong in the city. It's provided a great number of opportunities for residents and non-residents alike, but they're just the odd place in the zoning code with the land usage plan that has been, you know, there's a plan that just doesn't often fit, or sometimes someone's looking for a gap in the code, and so I think I'm fully in support of reevaluating, looking at the land use plan. I want to thank the city Director of Planning and Zoning and those involved in the city for this step, because I think it's, a lot of residents have said, we want, we want a pause on some of these things in some areas, and that takes time, and it takes appropriate care to look through the documentation and the appropriate zoning, and so I appreciate your work on it, and Mayor, I'm in favor of moving forward with this.
Do I have a motion, then?
A motion to approve Resolution 24-34.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 24-34. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passed. Chief, it's your turn, liquor license.
Good evening, Mayor, members of counsel. I have before you this evening just one permit transfer from the state of Ohio. Division of Liquor Control sent us notification of a request for the transfer of a D1, D2, and D3 liquor permit from Harbor Beaver Creek Management, which has been doing business as Harbor Chase of Beaver Creek at 4175 Indian Ripple Road. It's being transferred to the Patterson, which is the new name of that location there, and it's the, that's the, under the Colonial Senior Services Incorporated, and they're doing business as the Patterson at the same location. We've conducted all the required checks that are required through the Department of Commerce and Liquor Control. We have no concerns or issues, and we're recommending this application move forward without further comment.
Mayor, I motion to approve without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the transfer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Decision items, update of city council priorities.
It'd be me, Mr. Mayor. Back in July, actually, this all started back in 2022, with our initial vision that council approved and adopted and came up with, and then at that time in 2022 was five priorities. Last year, we added a, well, let me get the right thing up. Last year, we added a, a public safety strategic priority, and this year, council has indicated they're willing to approve a number seven. These are not in order of priorities, these are just simply listed so you know which one you're talking about, but promoting forward-thinking, long-term planning and development strategies, that is, the strategy, and then goals promote a visually appealing and attractive built environment that meets the current and future needs of the community through thoughtful design, consistent development, and sustainable growth. This includes maintaining high-quality business districts and offering a diverse selection of desirable residential options. So counsel, this is before you, just to update, basically, we tweaked a little bit of wording on a couple of these by adding an action verb on these, but this is, number seven is really what is new, and if, any discussion on that? If not, if we can have a, as we've discussed this already in council management strategy section back in July, if not, then if we have a motion to accept or approve these. Just for the public, these are, as this says here, guiding principles that council has so that, these are the priorities, so as we're building our budgets and, and anything that comes, legislation that comes through council during that year, there's a, you know, building blocks that they can look back on and say, this, these are our priorities, these are our building blocks, and does this meet this goal or this strategy? And base many decisions on that kind of stuff, but we will definitely be building our goals and objectives through the budget process based on these seven priorities, and of course, the vision statement, of course. So open to any questions or comments?
Any input from counsel?
Yeah, I like number seven. I like the way it's worded, put together. I think it allows for, as it notes, long-term planning and planning development. I think that's very useful overall. I'm in favor of adding number seven. Just want to raise again, number four, as I did at the council strategy session. It reads, "As the city has grown over the past two decades, the city's workforce has remained stagnant. The city's workforce should be expanded to meet the demands of residents and prepare for the future." I think that's particularly true in parks and the odd area. I quibble with the word expanded is the only thing I'll add, Mayor. Maybe modified is something to consider. I'm not an economist, but I hang out with a lot of economists, and just, you know, I can imagine reading this in the middle of a recession, for example, or if there is some kind of economic downturn, heaven forbid, hopefully it doesn't, but, you know, economic history suggests otherwise, and so a continuous expansion, I think, concerns me. Just to modify where appropriate is something I'd consider, but anyway, just for counsel's consideration.
If I may, I think the point of that one is that we were so far below staff in many, many different areas, including police, until we, the last levy just passed, and public service when the, so I think, you know, this, like you said, this is 2022 when we were doing this. I think if, I think the point, same point, exact point is, would be good to be made if we just removed be expanded to. So the city's workforce should meet the demands of residents and prepare for the future. I think that says the same thing.
I like that, too. Absolutely.
Do you want to make a motion to that effect?
Mayor, I'd like, I'd motion to change strategic priority number four to remove, should be expanded to...
Be expanded to, yeah, be expanded to.
Yep, sorry.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to amend this to eliminate the, be expanded to.
Right.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And now the original motion. Any more input on this?
I would just add that I think it's, it's good for residents to see where council is headed and how all the actions that we take up here serve a larger purpose, and it's really for the benefit of the residents of Beaver Creek, and this is what we discuss when we're looking at everything coming into the city, looking at how we can improve the city. These seven priorities really are what we use as our building blocks, so...
Yeah, I remember when we did these, it took a couple of hours to get through and figure out what we were doing, but I think it's a good basis to work from, so. Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
Move to accept counsel priorities as amended?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve counsel priorities. The word went away. As amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. OML 2024 Annual Conference. I don't know if she has, do you have anything on that? This is for...
This is for attendance to the OML 2024 Annual Conference in Columbus for Mayor Adams and Vice Mayor Bales. The cost of the conference for both is $9.50, and the room would be $1.22, so we have it in the budget.
Do you mind just identifying, it's Ohio Mayor's League, correct, the OML?
Oh, Ohio Municipal League.
Ohio Municipal League.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's pretty much, I've been to a couple of these meetings, and it's cities from all over the state that come in and talk and have presentations. It's a good networking event, good opportunity to meet with a lot of other mayors and find out what's going on, and council people, there's council people from all over the state as well, they come in and it's...
And the league is the chief lobbying arm for municipalities in the state of Ohio, so when, you know, when they go after home rule in the legislature, it's not their intent, but particular groups come up to carve out a piece why the league is the voice that tries to restrain that type of activity.
And we're also involved with the Ohio Mayor's Alliance, which is the top 30 cities, so both of them work the same way, as Councilman Kern was saying. They have lobbyists in Washington to look out for the city's interest and to really protect that home rule, because that's, the state is trying to take that away, they really are, so...
How many nights?
It's October 23rd through the 25th, so it's Wednesday, Thursday, and you leave on Friday.
Two nights.
Two nights.
The conference rate is really very reasonable, the hotel rate is a steal in many ways, so I'm in support, Mayor.
It's also important for all the reasons Councilmember Kern listed out, so I would move to approve attendance at the 2024 Ohio Municipal League Annual Conference by Mayor Adams and Vice Mayor Bales.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the annual conference. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, this next is a discussion item. I wanted to put it on the agenda so we could talk a little bit more about it. We did it at the strategic session. It's recreational marijuana, and I'd like for Josh to kind of give us an overview of everything, if you don't mind.
Sure, and I'll do it both in terms of what the law states and the history of how we got to where we are. I think, as everyone knows, in November of last year, there was statute passed allowing for recreational marijuana sales in the state of Ohio. Shortly thereafter, the city passed a moratorium prohibiting the recreational sale of marijuana in the city, as well as an ordinance prohibiting the sale of recreational marijuana in the city. So there can be no future recreational marijuana facilities based upon our current ordinances in, in the city of Beaver Creek. There is an exception, however, in the statute that sets forth a specific process for medical marijuana sales. If there is an existing facility that was selling medical marijuana before the statute was passed, they were automatically eligible to receive a license for selling recreational marijuana. And there's a process where if the city wants to prohibit that facility, that specific facility that was previously a medical marijuana facility, there is a process within the statute that the city must follow. So within 120 days of the issuance of the license, the city has to pass an affirmative ordinance prohibiting the sale of recreational marijuana at that particular facility. In this case, Beaver Creek has one facility, the True Leaf Medical Marijuana Facility along that, which is now received and is selling recreational marijuana. The initial license was issued June 21 of 2024. That, on my calculation, puts our deadline as October 19 of 2024, if the city wishes to prohibit sales of recreational marijuana at that specific facility. If council were to pass such an ordinance, True Leaf would then have 60 days in which to file a petition, which would allow them to get this on the next general election. That general election cannot be any sooner than 90 days after the petition is filed, so that means if the city passed an ordinance prohibiting the sale of recreational marijuana at the True Leaf facility, the next, they, they would not be able to be put on the next available, the next November election, it won't be on there. It only takes 100 signatures to get this on the ballot if the city prohibits it. I fully believe that if the city were to pass an ordinance, they would easily get those 100 signatures and put this on the ballot. The next general election, on my calculation, that this would be up for a vote, would be November of 2025. During the time where this is pending, they will be able to continue to sell recreational marijuana. If the city, if the voters vote to allow recreational marijuana at that facility, that's the end of the game, that's, it'll still be allowed. If they vote no, then within 60 days of, they'll be able to still sell, I think it's either six, it's 90 days after that, they'll continue to be able to sell, and then they can also put in an application for relocation, and they'll be able to continue to sell until that application is addressed. So really, if the city were to put an ordinance prohibiting sales, and then this would go on the election in 2025, and the citizens would vote that they prohibit the sales at that facility, you're talking about recreational sales continuing... that facility, you're talking about recreational sales continuing probably well into at least early 2026. So if you were to, like, follow out this process, that would be what would happen in terms of a timeline. There is a benefit to the city financially for the sale of recreational marijuana. Under the statute, there is a 10% tax on recreational sales. There is no such similar tax on medical sales. Of that 10%, 36% is put into a fund for the local municipalities. It's broken down the, the other percentages of that 10. So essentially, you get 3.6% of all sales within the city of recreational marijuana back as a tax revenue. So by our calculation, if you want to prohibit the sale at that facility, we would need to put this ordinance on as an emergency. Because of our charter, we don't, and the requirements for advertising, it would not be on until the late September meeting. You could, would have time for a second reading, but not for a third, and therefore, it would have to be passed as an emergency ordinance to get, get the prohibition done within the deadline. I did talk with council for True Leaf about that particular deadline, and his opinion was that the deadline doesn't start running until the sales actually began. So that 120-day period would not have started until sales began earlier this month. That's not consistent with my reading of the statute. It's not consistent with the reading that Mr. McHugh has of the statute. I talked to several other law directors. They certainly were, they were under the assumption that that deadline runs from the date of the original license. So to be safe, I don't want to be wrong about this and, and put it off. If to be safe, if the council's decision is to prohibit it, I would say do it, put it on the next council meeting where it would be available to be voted on and after a public, public hearing. If anyone has any questions, I'm open to questions.
Thank you very much.
I mean, how long have they been, the one over here that we have?
Mike.
Huh?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. How long have they been selling it over there at our location now?
Sales began on?
It's the 26th of August, and they've been selling since?
August the 6th.
August the 6th.
Correct.
And then you're saying if there was action by our council to prohibit recreational marijuana, they could continue to sell it for about two years?
They could continue to sell it if they file that petition to get it put on the ballot. I give the likelihood of that being close to 100%. So in all, if they did nothing, after 60 days, the sales would stop. I don't think that would happen. So more than likely, you are correct, sales would continue well into 2026. If the council prohibited it and the city voted, the citizens voted no. Obviously, if the citizen, city council prohibits it, or, or the city council doesn't prohibit it, recreational sales will continue. If the city council prohibits it and the citizens vote yes, that it's still allowed, then it would continue forever. The only, the shortest timeframe for it being prohibited and sales to discontinue is you vote to prohibit it now, and the 2025 election, the citizens vote to prohibit it then, then we're talking about 2026 for the final sales.
What are other cities doing around us? Can you give us a quick view of that? Do you have any knowledge, Josh, on there?
I, I have not, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know what other cities are doing that have the existing medical marijuana facilities. I know lots of cities that didn't have medical marijuana facilities voted to also prohibit recreational sales, but there are certainly surrounding communities where they're, they're allowing it.
Yeah, I think the Cleveland Plain Dealer said there were 55 municipalities that did not have a dispensary in there. I think they opposed, but they didn't have anything there to begin with.
And as I say, there's two different processes. If there was no existing medical marijuana facility, it's really easy to prohibit them, a new facility moving in, and there's, we've done that here. It's just for the existing medical marijuana facility, there's a different process under the Ohio Revised Code.
And we're not here tonight to make any kind of decision, yes or up or down. We're just, what this is about is to discuss whether or not we do bring forth an ordinance. And then we'll have the public discussion and all of that. But I wanted to get some input from all of you to decide, do we do this or do we not?
I'm in favor of moving it forward, Mayor, for three reasons. One, I'm deeply concerned about the home rule and the fact that the state simply moved to allow for recreational marijuana when we had, well, a previous iteration of council had medical marijuana only, and so the state has effectively put this in without anything that the city has done. Second, on issue two, voted across the state, the citizens of Beaver Creek voted against it very narrowly by 60 votes. For me, I mean, I can only chat with so many people. It's always hard to ascertain exactly what the people think about any given decision, but on this, we actually know that it's deeply split. And in situations like that, I like to go before the voters and let them pick. And I don't want to be unfair to True Leaf, but my sense is that they would get the, get the requisite number of votes to make it a referendum in, in November of 2025, as legal council outlined. And so I think that's a, a good and fair way to put it together. And so for those two major reasons, Mayor, I'm in favor of bringing forward an ordinance.
Anyone else?
I, I would agree with that. I know Councilwoman Schwartz and Vice Mayor Bales are not here tonight, and I don't want to speak on their behalf, but I know in prior discussions we've had as council during work sessions, it came up that even though it was a narrow, it narrowly, very narrow margin that Beaver Creek residents opposed this, I think the residents who lived where this facility would be located voted in favor of it. So I am also in favor of moving forward with this because of Councilmember Doerr's reasonings of getting more people to come out and talk about it, getting more opinions from the city and the residents to see really where we go from here. You know, when it's just a medical facility, I think that has a different type of draw to the building, as opposed to now it's open to everyone, so they may be experiencing a higher volume of customers than, you know, the people living in that area may have seen previously. And I want to give them a chance to react now to those changes and see if that changes their mind on things or come out and tell us how it's going for them and what their experience has been. So I'm very much in favor of moving forward with a motion to put this in as an ordinance.
I'm not in disagreement with what Councilman Doerr and Joe Garcia had to say. I've actually talked to a lot of people recently. I've, I've been on the fence for this for a little while now. I feel like we're bringing something forward that's been voted on and voted on and voted on. It's, I've, we've been talking about medical marijuana and then recreational marijuana for years through Ohio. It did pass. In talking with residents, it is kind of a split. You're right. You know, I'm, I'm seeing people, so I'm not opposed to seeing it an ordinance so that it, because I, like you said, 100%, they're going to be, they'll get the signatures and put it on the ballot. If it has to go back to Beaver Creek citizens for a vote, then no harm, no foul.
The Cleveland Plain Dealer had an article where they said that the, the revenue from the recreational marijuana was vastly beyond the medical. Dispensaries that were selling it were really just, I forget how much they saw, over $11 million in the first week or something, and it was out of sight. So these dispensaries are looking for revenue, more revenue, I think, from the recreational side of this rather than the medical. Yeah.
I think we have to keep in mind that, you know, that excise tax, they have 3.6% of that does come back to the city. So whatever that number is, that would be there. And we have medical or recreational marijuana all around us. We say no here in Beaver Creek, it's still out there. But I'm, I'm here to listen to you guys, and that's if we want to bring an ordinance forward and have the public input and things like that, I think that maybe that's something we probably should do.
The ordinance gets approved?
No, it doesn't mean the ordinance is approved. It just means it's here to be brought forward. And yeah, this does not say yes or no to anything. This just gives us the opportunity. And I wanted to get the input from you guys here to see if that's what, where you wanted to go, so that we could decide in public what it was going to be.
I feel the 120 days kind of limits us a little bit in the sense that we haven't had time to weigh, is this a problem? Has it been a problem? Is it becoming a problem? Is it, is there revenue coming in? Are we seeing money from it? You know, and because we're, because we're kind of rushed in having to make this decision.
At this point, I don't think we've seen any revenue.
It's too soon.
But we're only talking two weeks, three weeks at the most.
The statute gives a timeframe for when the revenue distribution happens. It's quarterly at the end of the month, following the quarter. So you, you won't see him for revenue for a while.
I think the three weeks we've had it, I don't think there's been anything from the police department at this point.
No, the only thing at the current facility has been a little bit of traffic increase as expected and a fender bender. Other than that, that's, that's been it.
Councilman, Councilman Littrell, you, being in law enforcement prior, how will they, do you have some idea, how will they, if people who are up on marijuana, how will they test them out on the road? And we know what they do with alcohol. They have a test, but, but I noticed in one article I read in a police facility, publication, that they were concerned about how they would test a person who had, had too much.
I, I foresee, and the chief may already know, I foresee some type of a device will be developed and be able to test somebody pretty quickly. It's probably not real difficult to walk up to a car that's had people smoking marijuana in it and tell. I can tell when my neighbors four doors down are smoking marijuana. So, I mean, that's my, that's what I think the future will be, almost like a breathalyzer, probably. And probably the smell will probably be in there. That's, I'm just guessing, so. Chief would probably be able to answer your question better than, better than me. But I can tell you that I, I spent many years at sheriff's office teaching the dare program. That was part of my duties.
Right.
So I talked to, I spoke on marijuana for, for a long, long time, you know, so. Do I think it's a good thing? No. But do I think that a stop selling in Beaver Creek going to keep people from doing it? Absolutely not. It's just a matter of whether the citizens decide they want it to be able to be purchased around the corner or they have to drive across the street.
That's about what it comes down to, doesn't it? Go across, go, go around the corner, because you've got municipalities all around you that, well, you got a state law that allows it.
Exactly.
Okay. I appreciate the transparency, Mayor. I think this conversation is a good one, and I think moving an ordinance forward allows us to continue it and to get public input and see what the people of the city think on this before we make a decision. But I, I think the next step is moving forward so we can have that discussion, a wider one.
Yeah, that was what this decision was for, just to decide, do we want to move it forward? I, I think having input from the citizens is good. You know, if they come out fully in favor of it, you know, we'll have to look and see what we've got, so.
Motion?
Do we need a motion for this? Okay. If I need to have a motion, then?
Mayor, move to bring an ordinance forward as an emergency. I don't know if that's needed, legal counsel, but we'll, it will be a?
It will need to be by an emergency.
By emergency?
Yep, by emergency.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to bring a, an ordinance forward to be discussed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I guess we'll bring it forward. But as I said, this doesn't mean that it's, we're saying no. This is just, I wanted to make sure that everybody was kind of where they were so we could talk about it. And I know the motion's already been made and passed, so, but we'll discuss this in September. Okay, council time. Well, Vice Mayor Bales isn't here tonight, so I can't forget him. Councilman Curran?
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the opportunity to go to a neighborhood watch meeting. It was out at Station 61, and we were honored by Officer O'Neal at that meeting, who gave a excellent presentation on what people ought to be doing to keep their home secure, et cetera, et cetera. A lot of concern about the thievery of automobiles in their, in, in the community and in their particular neighborhood. And so it was a very constructive meeting. Also want to say we, that, of course, we have a holiday coming up. Everybody has a good Labor Day. Also, we want to mention the, most importantly, our town hall. Takes place Thursday evening, 6 to 8 p.m. We want to invite all citizens who are listening tonight to come to the main elementary on Dayton Xenia. And I think the staff manager, the staff will be on the platform. Will not be on the, will be down below, all right? But she'll be basically giving some messages there, okay? So want to encourage our citizens in the city of Beaver Creek to come to our town hall. And then lastly, looking for hopefully good weather for popcorn festival coming up here in September.
Maybe not this week's weather. This 90, not this week.
No, not this week's weather. Hopefully cooler. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, excuse me, Councilman Garcia?
Thank you. I would just also like to remind residents that we are still doing conversations with council. So the next conversation with council will be September 10th, and that is going to be at Southern Ohio Brewery from 6 to 7. And for those of you who are morning people, we are going to have one in the morning at Panera from 8:30 to 9:30, and that will be on September 16th. So plenty of opportunities between the conversations and the town halls. Come out and speak with council, hear from our city, hear the things, what we're going to be doing, and ask any questions that you have as we get closer to election season. And that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Councilman Doerr?
Thank you, Mayor. Had the blessing of addressing the Beaver Creek Rotary Club recently, talking about U.S. foreign policy. And I want to thank Vice Mayor Bales and Mike Zwick and Mark Weinstein for the invitation. Their ongoing friendship and just the ability to engage. Also want to thank the Beaver Creek Police and Beaver Creek Township Fire Department. My wife volunteers with the student ministry, the stew men at University Baptist Church, and they had their opening day, and it's kind of a get messy night, and then they get hosed off by the fire department. And so it's really a wonderful community engagement. It's hilarious. And the students have an absolute blast, so I much appreciated the, the work and coordination there. And that's it for me, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Councilman Littrell?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the second conversations with council and with mayor and city manager. Good time. I really enjoyed it. We had it at Four Par, right?
On Par.
On Par, on par. I, if you haven't been to that place, you ought to check it out. I'm looking forward to it this winter. Kind of a new discovery for me, so I'm going to keep it short and sweet. And that's all I really want to say.
Well, thank you very much. I recommend attending these conversations with council if you can. I've been to two of them now, and conversations have always been really good, back and forth. Things come up that we don't know the answer to, but that's okay. We find it and get back to the people, and I think that's what's important. Also attended the ribbon cutting for the Patterson, which is formerly Harbor Chase, along with Councilman Curran. They did a really nice job over there. And that same day, August 13th, my granddaughter turned 30, so that made me feel really old. Not supposed to have grandkids that old. And I drove to Findlay, Ohio to attend the Ohio Mayor's Alliance meeting, which is similar to what the OML is. We did discuss the marijuana thing up there, and they're all, they're looking for answers. I think every city out there is looking for an answer. Our legislature really didn't do anything. They just accepted it the way it was, and, but I have heard there will be several changes to that law this year. What they'll be, I have no idea. I don't even begin to guess what that's going to happen up there. I was able to attend a brainstorming session for the upcoming Blue Star Families Welcome Week and Block Party. This is when the new military people come into town, and they have a gift basket for them. They also, this Block Party is something they're doing new this year. It's going to be at the Hope Hotel on September 16th from 4 to 7. If you have the opportunity, please go out and be a part of that. Welcome in some of these new airmen and their families, and just let them know that you're glad that they're here. Last Friday, I was able to attend the Beaver Creek football game with Xenia. That is the annual back That is the annual backyard trophy game. Unfortunately, I didn't get to bring the trophy home. Xenia kept it, but it was a good time, and Beaver Creek was a lot closer this year than they were last year. And hopefully, I talked to the coaches. I said, "We really need to bring that home next year," and they said, "Yes, they really do." And then I was able to attend the ribbon cutting for Perspire Sauna at the Green. And if you've never been there, I think it's worth a shot, because they've got nine sauna rooms in there that, they do a lot of different holistic-type therapies, and it's, I'm going to try it out, just see what it's like. But that's all I have. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to repeat many things at all. Just again, this Thursday night, 6:00 to 8:00 at Main Elementary for the town hall. Please, please come out, 6 o'clock. And community conversations with council's been mentioned as well. And Beaver Creek Senior Center Health Fair and Outdoor Market, this is Friday, September 13th, at 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Beaver Creek Senior Center. Inside the health fair, we'll offer health information screenings, flu shots, and other resources for seniors. Outside vendors will sell handcrafted goods, garage sale items, and baked goods from Hawker Church. Event is free and open to the public. I just wanted to give a shout out to the Beaver Creek Golf Club for completing Phase Two of bunker renovations. Two of three, so next year will be our final phase of this. The renovation project focuses on holes six, seven, and eight. This three-phase project will revitalize all the bunkers on the course, improving contour, alignment, reducing maintenance, and enhancing playability. So Phase Three is scheduled for 2025, and please schedule a tee time. There might be some open slots with 98 degrees projected over the next couple of days, but please schedule a tee time online, bevercreekgolfclub.com to experience the upgrades. And as mentioned, the Beaver Creek Popcorn Festival will start. There's the hours there, starting always the weekend after Labor Day. And just wanted to make mention, I think most people realize where it's at, but the road will be closed, beginning, closed at 4:00 a.m. on September 7th, and will reopen around midnight on Monday, September 9th. Also, the city's police department and the city in general, general city, have tents there, so please stop in, say hello. We will have all kinds of information about the city projects, road projects, park programs, senior center, police programs, all kinds of information to provide to residents. And I'm sure many of council members, if they haven't already signed up for slots, different times, you can stop in, and there'll be different council members, different staff members there. So stop in and say hello. I will make a mention, there's, I see, four class members, yeah, four Citizens Academy members here tonight. Last Thursday, we began our Citizens Academy. I think we had, I think there was 28 there. I think we'll go have 29, something like that in total. Looking forward to it. This Thursday at 6:00 will be the police department. Basically, what happened is they heard the town hall, more or less the town hall speech last Thursday. They were the trial run, and there was a couple good comments and questions to help us tweak the town hall presentation for Monday, for Thursday night. So appreciate them and their patience. A lot of groundwork was laid, and this week, they'll start out at the police station and then the fire department the week after that. So it was a lot of good students, and a lot of good information was presented, good comments, and appreciate them attending. This is our ambassadors to the city, where they hear and learn and educate and have comments and great questions, and they help, help us get the communications out there to residents of especially misinformation, and, you know, things get twisted a little bit as it gets out there. And I just look at it as, you know, almost 30 more residents that have been educated in all the major departments of the city, and they go out there to spread truth instead of, you know, misunderstandings, and they can help us with the communication effort. So appreciate them being here tonight, and appreciate them, and with, what, six more weeks of class. So thank you, guys. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. I want to thank the people that have been, Citizens Academy as well. I think it's important that you come and learn more about your city. I know when I first got involved in this, I had no idea what all was done, and I think a lot of us sitting up here were the same situation. We really didn't understand, other than Chuck, he just, he knows everything, so. But now's the time for citizen comments. Anyone that'd like to come up and speak to the council on any subject, you have three minutes. Please state your name and your address, please.
I am Jim Fountain at 1888 Rich Court. I didn't expect to have people already talking about the Citizen Academy, because that's why I came up here, so let me say it anyway. I just wanted to thank you, the council, and the city for supporting it, with now myself and approximately 29, 30 others are in the Second Citizens Academy, which was last Thursday. It was great. Couple of things, as a citizen, just want to point out, there were people that were 50-plus years of residents in the city to people that are fairly new in the city. There was a lot of questions, as City Manager Landrum talked about, and Assistant City Manager Jones, and Communication Director Hariko, and they all responded to our questions, or they responded afterwards with email. So from a citizen's standpoint, to see the plethora of questions, and that was just on finances last Thursday, then the police are coming up this coming Thursday, the plethora of questions on finance and understanding budgets and revenue from people that had been here for four or five decades, and people that, like myself, have been here for only a few years, that's really exciting to see in a city. And it's a credit to how much time went into it. In fact, time, we had the two-hour meeting, and we could have easily gone another half hour, not because City Manager Landrum was talking so long, but because there were so many questions. There's just a lot of interest, a lot of engagement by us citizens, and the fact that there's only 30 of us is sad. I just wish we would have more people or more weeks or something, because there's so much to learn. So I just wanted to thank the council and the city for allowing this. It's really great.
Thank you for your participation.
Yeah, thank you for participating. That's, that's what it's all about, is citizens participating in their government. I mean, it's, I think that's really, really important, so. Anyone else?
Move adjourned, Your Honor.
I've, I've not moved, I've not closed this-
Oh, we're not done.
Seeing that, I'll close the public portion of the meeting now.
I move to adjourn, Mayor.
I had a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor sitting up here saying aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you for coming.